What my ring called? Commitment and dedication.
I was about to wear my ring. No, not the broken. Okay, very good. Everybody's in. Thank you everyone. Thank you. Good evening everybody. Good evening everyone online. The time is now 7:07. Thank you for attending CC10 special meeting for only two items that are going to be on the agenda, which would be the interview of the applicant and voting on the new members. We have face representatives here in our presence in person and we just going to quickly move forward and do roll call. Emma Alana. Irina Debonis is excused. Erica Gonzalez is excused. Michelle Paines. Anita Parsons present. Amy Si present. Garemo Vazquez present. And Catherine Wheeler is excused. As I stated before, we will only be going over... We would only be going over the items that are on the agenda and we're going to first start with the interview of A.G. Yeah, I introduced that face was here. Yeah, I mean if y'all want to say your names on the record, that'd be great. We have five trustees here, which is awesome. I don't know if that's record breaking. Four trustees, okay. And the chief. I don't know if you want to introduce yourselves on the record. Thank you so much for attending all the way up in the Bronx. Thank you so much. I'm going to just quickly do a recap of what happened this year and why FACE is here representing for us as trustees and why we have this special meeting. On March 26, CC10 held its calendar business meeting at PS8 at Bedford Park in the Bronx. In attendance was Bronx Borough President Vanessa L. Gibson, PEP Bronx member Tom Shepard, and just promoted to chief or superintendent in the Bronx and Brooklyn Superintendent Dr. Maribel Holler. During the meeting, we interviewed Maria Vela Lobos and Yena Set Estrella. Both applicants were not voted in. Afterwards, several complaints were sent into the CC10 email mailbox for an explanation. On April 2, the council sent in a public statement on behalf of the council. On April 11, mediation was held to work on a resolution. On April 15, the council received several recommendations based on the outcome of the mediation. On April 16, CC10 had their calendar and business meeting and the two applicants were not voted on the council. On April 26, the interim president requested the chancellor's D-140 to be executed based on the council's 60-day seat vacancy. On May 28, the applicants were not voted again on the calendar and business meeting. On June 14, the council received a new applicant. On June 18, CC10 held its calendar and business meeting at MS390. In attendance was PEP chairperson Brad Faulkner. The two previous applicants were not voted on again. On June 21, the council received the signed chancellor's order. On July 23, the council held its calendar and business meeting. The two applicants were not voted on again. On July 31, the council's, the chancellor's order went into effect. And on August 2, we received the final... ...executed order. So that is the timeline from since March 26 up to today. Why we have not voted on these two applicants and also received a new applicant. And the council has been in stalemate since March 26. Where all these interventions, we said FACE help us. We threw in the white flag. We surrender. We need help. They intervened three times. The council still couldn't come to terms, so the chancellor's order is now in effect. And because of that, we now have our FACE representatives here as trustees to help us vote in these new applicants because of disagreements, biases, or what have you, or why we couldn't have these two applicants in this, on our council for the year of 2023 into 2025. We will now move on. Next on our agenda, we will now interview the new applicant, Angie Disusa. We have her application here and the council can now ask questions in regards... So why would she want to be a member on CC10? Yes. Thank you so much. Does the council have any questions to ask Angie, Mr. Disusa? What's your experience and... Interpreter, what's your experience and why did you choose this council to serve and how can you benefit this council?
This is the first time that I've come. I have three children. I have to learn. I have to learn. I have to learn. Because when I came here, I needed help and nobody helped me. And so I'm interested in learning to help my community, my school especially. So I want to learn how to help other people in my community and especially to help this school.
What skills do you bring to this district? What capacities do you have to help this school? I don't want to be here. I don't want to be here. Title 1.
I'm in my school. I'm the representative of Title 1.
I'm the Title 1 representative in my school.
I'm studying a little bit more. I'm interested in learning more.
I was re-elected to a second term this year and after having learned a lot in my first year, and I'm prepared to enthusiastically learn in this council. I have some questions. Being on the PTA at RE40, what did you experience or what did you participate in being on the PTA?
You have served in the Association of Parents in the 340th.
Yes.
What activities participated and what have you done serving in this?
I have participated in the workshops that are organized by the parent board.
I have participated in all the workshops that were organized by the parent board.
I also work with the parents of my children. It's a small school. I try to invite everyone to join the reunion to share information that sometimes parents, because they work, don't participate in the reunions. I try to remember them to connect. It's important to be there in the reunion, both for our children and for our community. Because sometimes the parents, in this case, the parent gives an information of a lesson and it's important and those parents are asked.
I was a very vigorous liaison between the parents of the other children that my children know to share information from the meetings and to remind them of upcoming meetings and encourage them to attend meetings and make them aware of the importance of attending meetings. Because they work and they have children and it's very hard for them to work that into their schedule. So when they couldn't make it, I would share information with them, but I made every effort to see that they could make it if they possibly could.
If they don't vote for their children, no one else will do. One must advocate for his children.
It's very important that your children have a voice in the school and how are they going to have a voice if you don't speak just? So you know when the PTA meetings are held monthly?
And you know when the Association of Parents is there? When the reunion occurs?
Yes, we connect once a month via Zoom.
Yes, we meet once a month via Zoom. And so you know what day?
But you are at the time of the dates.
The frequency.
Because I frequently...
Yes, we connect on the Mondays and the Sunday, the third day of the month.
It's the second Tuesday of every month at 6. So any other questions for Angie?
Basically, her answer is kind of awkward. So she just answered that she only speaks to the parents that her children know. What about the parents that her children don't know, like other parents in the school who are persons?
You have said that you have served in the class between the association and the parents of the children that have contact with your children. But it doesn't serve as a class with the parents of other children that you don't know.
Yes, I try to, when I go to the school, to the reunions, for example, when I go to the reunion to say to you that it's morning. I try to greet, have a good day, know my community, know a lot of people. And I try to remember always when I have a reunion, a lesson, I try to always remember what it's important to be present in the school, for our children, and to support the school.
Yes, I do. When I show up at work, at school to drop off my kids, I always try to speak to whoever is in the hallway, whether or not I know them, to introduce myself, to introduce them to the parents of the PTA and explain to them when meetings are held and why it's very important for them to attend. And also to make them aware when the next meeting is.
One more question. Being that that school, RE40, is in a diverse neighborhood, what is her role as a council member to help more than like the whole community, more the children this year?
Basically, around the 340th, there are many communities of classes and ethnicities and cultures varying. How does she see her role in amplifying that community?
Even though I don't speak English, I look for ways to understand who understands me and me understand them. And otherwise, I look for my phone and try to greet and...
I try to make contact with everybody, even though I don't speak English. I use Google Translate to try to talk to people who don't share my language. I don't let my contact just to people's...
I have a few questions.
Yes.
On your application, your statement indicates that you're on the PTA, Parent Teacher Association, you're their president, and you're Title 1. It's a little confusing as to are you on both or are you one or the other?
Well, it's a solicitude. It's confusing. It's confusing. It's confusing. It's confusing. It's confusing. If you are concentrated in the PTA or representing for Title 1, because it can't be perfected.
No, I don't want.
Right. I have three questions. It's like three parts. I'll allow the translator to translate.
I can make a few questions and I'll pause after each question to give the opportunity to the parent later.
First question is, how do you know about community education?
How was you informed by the community council in the district?
Because I went and attended at my school and I was a volunteer at the restaurant.
Because I was a volunteer, when you came to our school last year, I served the coffee.
And I looked for information. I tried to learn what I could at that time, asking for information about your activities. And so I want to be more in the life of my children's school, so I've been asking. And I found out that there are spaces, so I asked.
And I kept up on your activities because I am trying to become increasingly involved in my children's education. And that's how I learned that they can do something.
Question two. I relate to CC. What is your understanding of a community education council that is a higher level than the school level? Since we serve the district.
I'm sorry, the interviewer doesn't understand the question.
What is her understanding of community education councils, which is a very different level compared to a school level at a...
So what is the difference?
What's her understanding of what our role is?
How does she see this council that functions at a higher level than just a particular school? And how does she see its function and its role?
This is my third time assisting. I've seen how they work and everything. I think they are very important. I didn't know. The first day of the first meeting, I found out a lot of information. So I'm interested in learning. To be honest, I'm sincere. I don't know anything. I'm willing to learn.
I have to be sincere. I only attended three PTA meetings. So I'm not going to pretend that I'm an expert in what goes on here. All I can tell you is that I know that your work here is very important and that you handle a lot of issues that we don't see at the school level. And I'm prepared to enthusiastically learn all I can.
Thank you. And that's the last question. As you're going to a new school here, what focus on policy would you want to put in fact on education here in District 10 or in New York City?
Well, entering the school year, what would be your priorities and priorities? Focusing on what kind of political or academic or philosophy would you like to see in the system?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
So policy meaning something that could enforce a change in the education world in this neighborhood and this community? So is there something she would like to bring to the table, to discuss?
Is there a priority? Do you have some changes that you would like to see in the school system? Something that should be in her original neighborhood or...
For now, I don't think so. Let's see what I can do. I get the opportunity to continue here, learning and seeing the needs that my community, my school has to be able to come here and advocate and say that I would like to welcome them.
I think I'd like to listen and learn before I weigh in with my priorities. I think I'd like to listen and learn before I weigh in with my priorities so that I can see through experience what the greatest needs are with the school community before I weigh in. Thank you so much, council members. We have interviewed Angie D'Souza. If anybody has any more questions, if not, we will move forward with the voting of the applicant, of the... Yes, okay.
Can everyone, Angie, ¿usted hablando de talleres que usted ha tenido en la escuela?
Angie, you were talking about...
¿Cuáles son las experiencias sobre el hecho que usted considera que ha tenido la propia padre?
What do you... What are some things that you get, you get community...
Bueno, nosotros hemos la compartió mi escuela de diferentes talleres. Hemos venido mucho como padre, como diferentes padres que han ido a... Y ellos de título uno, se hizo una nueva defensa personal. Son talleres que aprendimos mucho, aprenden mucho los padres que existieron y ver sobre todo la... el aporte que tenemos de padres que existían igual así cuando hay diferentes talleres que tratamos de apoyar y la verdad pues nos ha ido muy bien por parte de la comunidad que nos apoya.
Estuve there, learned a lot on the workshops that we have been doing and the community was supporting us on the way. That's it, are we done, Mr. You know? Okay.
I want to mention, as I'm tempted, something translated everything.
Okay.
So I want to mention a few things. I'm going to turn this as well. One thing that she mentioned is she has not experienced, right? And it's about her children's and her school. She's here to learn and the focus is the school, her school and her community. Quiero mencionar algo como intérprete que soy también, entonces que no sé nada. Dice que no tiene experiencia, es sobre los niños de ella y es sobre su escuela y su comunidad. I just want, quería clarificar eso.
Thank you, thank you so much. We're going to now move forward in our second part of our agenda and that'll be the voting of the applicants. We're going to start from the oldest moving forward to the newest one. One of our applicants is online, that's Maria Vela Lobos. She's online, she's already stated why she wants to be on the council. She has several years of experience working on the council prior to this year's council and we're just going to move forward on her vote. And we're going to do a roll call vote before we do the actual vote for Maria Vela Lobos. Okay, Emma Alada, Irina Debonis, it's not here, Erica Gonzalez is not here, Michelle Haynes, Renita Parsons, present, Amy Si, Garemo Vázquez and Kathleen Wheeler, excused. Now for the vote for Emma Alada. Before I move forward, I want, can someone from Facebook give an explanation? Because we don't meet quorum here, how would you add on as as the trustees and be, and fill in the quorum on CC10 at this special meeting? If anybody could just answer those questions.
So the trustees will vote with the majority of the council. And so there are four members here, the three of us will all come to the forum.
Okay, very good. So anybody need to hear the, yes?
There are four there.
There's five here. And we need seven to meet quorum. Okay, so we have five council members that's here. One is excused, I will clarify on the record that two stated they could not make it today. They did not give a reason why, that's Erica Gonzalez and Irina Debonis. They gave in, well, they emailed the CEC and stated that they couldn't be here today. They did not give a reason why. Is that an acceptable excuse? Not necessarily, but they say they could not be here today for this special meeting. So we're just going to move forward right now for the vote for Maria Vela Lobos as a member of CC10. Roll call vote, Emma Alada, Michelle Haynes,
Yes.
Renita Parsons, yes. Amy Si,
Yes.
Garemo Vázquez, We have one, two, three, four, five, yeses and yes.
Maribel President Daniel, yes.
Garemo, yes.
Thank you so much, Faith. Maria Vela Lobos has passed, we have seven yeses with the two trustees from Faith. We thank you so much for meeting the quorum. Maria Vela Lobos will be a member as soon as she's sworn in by Faith. Moving forward, yeah, let's get from the votes for Friday. Next, Yanessa Estella, I would quickly state she was here. Both of these applicants have been here for the past several months. They already gave their reasoning why we had a little bit of confusion in our annual meeting in July in regards to eligibility. We clarified that, we fixed that, we're here today, we're going to vote her on roll call vote. Emma Alada,
Yes.
Michelle Haynes,
Yes.
Renita Parsons, yes. Amy Si,
Yes.
Garemo Vázquez and Faith's representatives.
Maribel President Daniel, yes.
Garemo, yes.
We have one, two, three, four, five and two trustees from Faith. Six, seven has been passed. Yanessa Estella is now a member of CC10 after she is sworn in by Faith. All right, last but not least, after Angie D'Souza has, she's been interviewed and questioned by the council members that are here, we're going to move forward with a roll call vote. Emma Alada, Michelle Haynes, no. Renita Parsons, yes. Amy Si, Garemo Vázquez, Faith?
Garemo, yes.
Can you go over the voting?
Sure, I will start again. Emma Alada, abstain. Michelle Haynes,
No.
No. Renita Parsons, yes. Amy Si, abstain. Garemo Vázquez, yes. So there is one, two abstains, one no and two yeses. And the two abstains equals no.
So, just to be nice. May I be remembered?
Yes. Now, go for rest from Faith.
So I do want to just clarify that that state is not necessarily a no.
Okay.
It's not yet. And also I just want to remind the council that they did receive an order from the Chancellor to fill the vacancy. That order by the third person who shall have just passed, which is why now we have been then continuing to be also part of the community. So if you would like to read to the vote, the order says you fill the vacancy, the candidates are eligible and they are four trustees. And you have majority, that's fine. So the trustees can only vote with a majority of members.
What reference?
The vacancy is not attached to a particular number, correct?
Your vacancies are over sixty days?
Right. And is not attached to a particular number of the members sitting on the council. With the two members that were just voted in, that brings us up to what, ten? Ten, it could be ten. Does that suffice the mandate? So are you saying we have to vote on all the applicants?
So what happens now is your last candidate who was Angie, right?
Right, yes.
So you have just voted in two candidates, one person is online who we cannot swear in or she cannot complete her oath. But Mrs. Estrella, yeah?
Yes.
You can be, we can take her outside, get the notarized, we have notary right here and then she comes back and then you can vote for the third time.
Okay, thanks.
So you can pause the vote for Angie when you come back to the table.
Very good.
But again, the trustees will not be able to vote unless they're voting with majority. Or if they cannot interfere with the decision leaving the council, thank you for that.
Thank you so much.
So if possible, that's why I asked Maribel to recognize by the chair.
Yes. Yes.
Teníamos un problema para conformar completar el consejo. Teníamos dos ampliados y uno nuevo que se regola en Brian.
Yo creo que... Can you interpret out loud what you're saying? Because you're interpreting it sometimes. We had a problem.
Before you interpret, Chair, may I be recognized?
Yes.
Miss Estrella, you have seven votes and you have been cleared to sit on the council, correct?
Correct.
Can you be escorted by Faith so you can complete your oath of office separately? So that you can return as a voting member of the... So now that Mrs. Estrella is now, she's considered a member of the council, she can vote it on. I don't know if Maria can hear me, Maria has also voted on on the council.
Correct.
However, she's not part of the decision making of the council because she's not in the oath of office.
Correct.
So she can listen, participate, but not make decisions.
Correct.
Okay? So I don't want you to continue while a member who's now seated will miss what you're saying.
Okay.
So if it's okay, please let him return.
That's fine.
Is that fair?
That's fair.
Yeah, so we pause?
Yes.
We have like two minute break, I use the restroom.
Yes.
Restroom break.
Okay, yeah, we have a break right now, we're going to have a break, five minutes break.
Thank you, ma'am, Chair.
Thank you.
No tiene derecho, we're not against this.
No, 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 I did those for you. Now, I'm talking about new school, new people.
Molly the interpreter was here for all three trainings.
Unfortunately, I don't understand. Otherwise, I could fill seats.
I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about at the district level, I'm talking about citywide. I'm talking about citywide, when you just. So that guy still owe me a question, the one we were on that last time, that he was gonna answer my title question, I ain't get the answer yet. But we need more training on the citywide level. We did it under Serena.
Yeah, let's take that.
I'll write that down.
Put it, put it, put it in and write it.
Yes, thank you.
I think, I think you'll get more participation.
Okay, we're ready. Yes, the time is now seven fifty-two. Yes. Uh, we're gonna move forward, we now have a newly sworn-in member. Congratulations. Absolute superpowers to notarize her and swear her in at of this evening, that is awesome. Awesome service for our community here at District Ten. We're gonna now do a new roll call vote. For, first, we're gonna do a roll call vote, and then we're gonna do a vote for Angie Disusa. Okay, Emma Alata.
Present.
Um, Irina Debonis is not here. Erica Gonzalez is not here, Michelle Haynes. Brenita Parsons is present, Amy Tsai.
Present.
Garemo Vazquez. Catherine Rilla is excused, and Yenisek Estera. Present. You, Tifo, we have one, two, three, four, five, six people present, and all we need is one base trustee to vote for Angie Disusa. We are now going to vote, Emma Alata. Michelle Haynes?
No.
Brenita Parsons, yes. Amy Tsai?
Abstained.
Garemo Vazquez?
Yes.
And Yenisek. We have one, two noes, one, two abstains, and two yeses. Well, the majority. Yes. Um. Would we like to do another vote? Yes. The vote is, there are two abstains, two noes, and two yeses. And yes, the vote doesn't pass, we have not reached form. Um, do we need to do another vote against Angie Disusa? Or we could table this for our next calendar and business meeting on August twenty-seven? Yes, Garemo Vazquez.
So it seems like we don't have dominion over our own activities, that we're not in charge of filling these seats, really. And, and I think we have to, we have to, uh, spend more time, we, we attended the workshops, and I think we have to spend a little more time rereading the bylaws and the manuals, and seeing what our obligations are as a, as a council. We shouldn't be in such disagreements. Yeah, I don't think we should make such a big deal out of Angie's lack of experience, when she has such a strong, uh, desire to learn and participate and enthusiastically. She has BTA experience, she has Title I experience, she's dedicated. She doesn't, she shouldn't need to have a PhD to participate in this. Yeah, it, 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 it makes me sad to see the negativity.
I, I would also like to comment. As interim president of CC Ten, I had absolutely no experience how to run this. And to give this new applicant not a chance to try, I think it's kind of against what we kind of stand for, our, our values. I know we're not perfect, and I know we're trying to choose the best, but we cannot know who the best is unless they have the experience. And it's only a few more months into the year, what harm would it do if Angie is on here? We've been through rougher stuff than this. And I've been through rougher stuff on District Ten, dealing with the insecurities and the disappointments and the ups and downs, and I still stuck it out, I'm still here, I'm with y'all. For us to get an executed chancellor's order to have face here, which has, I don't think, has ever happened. So I think we owe it to our community. If we're gonna move forward, let's just move forward, even if we can't agree. Let's agree to disagree, let's just move forward, let's show that we are able to be united, to push the policies, to push whatever we gotta do in the community. Let's lay that all aside, that's not gonna move us any forward or any faster to helping my child that's in District Seventy-Five, or your child that's in the school in District Ten to do anything if we continue to be in a split. Do we need to do another roll call vote again? Do anybody have any more comments, or do we need to do another roll call vote? Can we do another roll call vote before the eight o'clock hour? Because we already over. Oh, you did? Okay, so we're gonna do another roll call vote. Um. Put all your disagreements aside, we got the chancellor's order. Um, if you don't agree, or if things happen, as we already know, you know the law, if a member is not doing what they're supposed to do, your face is here, you go to face, you say, "Face, listen." Something is not happening, this council member is not doing what they, and they must step in and give us guidance on what to do there. But we have to put a little bit of more months of the year, and then we start all over again. And who knows if you're gonna be sitting, or me, sitting here again in the next year. So we're gonna do a roll call vote again for Angie Disusa. Emma Alata.
Okay.
Yes. Very good. Michelle Haynes. Yes. Brenita Parsons, yes. Amy Tsai. Garemo Vazquez. Yenisek. Okay, Michelle Haynes.
I'm sorry, I don't wanna be difficult. Are you willing to do more diversity, not only Spanish people, English people, but I mean, like, every where? There's Asians and Arabs and Africans, are you willing to channel, like, to focus on, like, nationality? Not only just English, Spanish, because our neighborhoods are more diverse than they were.
Yes, I, I already participate in workshops that are all communities, not just Hispanic communities. And I don't let my lack of, uh, that, I don't let my dependence on Spanish limit me. I use Google Translate, and I, 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 I am sure to greet everybody and welcome everybody regardless of what community they come from.
Michelle Haynes? Yes. Okay, and then Amy Tsai.
I do have a question. I know each and every one of us are not here, hopefully not here. Here for a title or a position, but here as parents of District Ten. As a parent, what is the one challenge you may have in the system for your children on education or for your community?
I'm sorry, I didn't get the last.
As a parent, what is the one challenge you may have as, uh, for your children or for the community that you see, that, that you represent?
As a mother, I have two daughters, I have two daughters, I have two daughters, I have two daughters, and the biggest challenge has been to be a mother. And to share with other mothers who understand. I look for information as much as I know. I share, and there are times when I don't know, I ask. That's my, my biggest challenge. To have more information than I have now.
So, uh, I'm the mother of two special education children. And in, in that capacity, my biggest challenge is in finding out the information about how to help them resource it, and also finding other parents in similar situations so that we can exchange information and, and in general, just expand our pool of, 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 of knowledge.
Thank you. Yes.
Yes. We have one, two, three, four, five, six yeses, and face.
I'm about Fred McDaniel, yes.
Yes. So we have the form, it has been passed, seven yeses.
You said after day this morning?
Yes. Yes.
Did it now, this morning?
Yes.
We recognize her as chair. I have to face the same, and I know that this is a very difficult decision because it went four times. And unfortunately. I would, I would just say this, you have another seat that's open. Make it your duty to take the application link, print the application, and take it to the community. Diversity, that you told us. Get parents to understand what these, these are, what are their powers, how can they apply, how can they serve, how can they advocate? Because representation of District Ten, right? And you can do that work by encouraging others to join. You still have a seat that is open. You have done a great, great open to the community tonight that you haven't done since March. So congratulate yourselves for doing that. You have three movements on the board. Now, you've been able to move your agenda and advocate for the community. Of all of the communities, not just pieces of like anybody. All of the community under the leadership of your interacting president.
Yeah.
And you should also be electing officers. And together, this should be the unity show when you're electing your leaders.
When you move.
Right? Like whoever that could be, whoever's running for president, whoever's running for another office. Please do that. Because if you don't elect your officers, you will be back here saying, well, who is leading our council? Who's attending these meetings? And that would be my advice, the same as you came together today. For this purpose, not, again, you didn't wanna say yes, and you didn't wanna say no, so you're abstaining. Or you didn't want to, you didn't want to abstain, so you, but you made a decision that, you know what? I've come to a compromise, I can live with it. I'm moving my council forward, and I'm gonna say a yes, just so that we can get folks in and learn to do the work with us. You can do that for your officers too. I know you can. I know you can. I know you can, can you?
Yes.
The, the, the folks that are coming on will only serve up until June thirty.
That's right, and then they have to, they have, I don't know, right, the election cycle will be. Yes, so you are elected to serve from now until the end of the term, which is June thirty, yeah, July first. The election term begins for the next two years. So when the election happens, during that cycle, you have to apply, if you're eligible, you will have, your community will vote for you, parents, right? So this is just to resounding. All right, despite everything, you're here now, so congratulations. All right, Chair.
Yeah, thank you so much, V D. I gotta say something very quickly. Oh, yes, oh, oh, well, uh, before we adjourn, and she's, um, Angie is sworn in, I would like to announce that in the upcoming weeks, actually, next week, Wednesday, I believe, on August fourteen, we will have a town hall meeting in regards to, uh, who will be our newly superintendent for District Ten. And this is super important, and why we need the members, because we need everybody's to comment, to question who would be that next upcoming superintendent. Um, I know we, um, evaluated Dr. Hula at the end of June, but she is the outgoing superintendent, so we need a new one for the new year, and we know a lot of things is going on for twenty twenty five. Um, and we need a leader, as well as we need a leader here in District Ten. So that is highly, highly important. Please join on that Zoom meeting if you haven't already received that information. Register, do it today, do it tonight, if you have to, um. So you, it will be marked on your calendar, also on August twenty seven, Tuesday, we will be back here doing our calendar and business meeting. And election again, yeah, we'll be here again, I'm always here, you're lovely neighborhood interim president. Uh, we also have to do a virtual meeting with, um, S C A yet again, with the new updated data that we've received in regards to the schools, we are doing a part two. So also look for a Zoom link for that, we are not sleeping, I feel like, uh, District Ten is the district that never sleeps. Cause I'm always grinding, always grinding, I'm, I don't know. Yet, uh, and I'm not looking forward to taking vacations. Um, so those are what's upcoming, and that's just August. I didn't even touch September as yet. Or I didn't even touch the upcoming events that we invite to this year. I know the, um, emergency was fire, of course. Uh, that was just the basis and the tip of the iceberg that C C Ten is doing this year. And we, we doing some major moves, but I need major moves with everybody, not with two or three or four of them. I need everybody on the council working together hand in hand. And the more we do it together, the more cohesive, or like a movement organism, breathing and moving together, and it starts resounding upon everybody, everybody's gonna ask, who is C C Ten? What are we doing? I don't wanna be at Novellas all the time, I don't like that. No, I don't wanna be your reality show that you pop in every once in a while just to get drama and gossip. We're doing work, we got resolutions to do. We have a lot of policies that we have to reform, and I want us to do that together. And it's all hearts and minds, is there any more comments? Yeah. Check the chat.
Yes.
Yeah, it's getting more.
I'd like to ask the trustees something. Go, I'm gonna copy the bylaws in Spanish, please.
Como, como que las secuelas?
Uh, cada uno de nosotros. Y si estamos diferentes cuerdas.
Ah, 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 okay, okay.
Yeah, and we have to do reports on the different schools, and it would be very helpful. Yeah, and we should have, uh, I want the Spanish, but everything.
Okay, um, just to answer that question, I have sent earlier this year a copy of the bylaws in Espanol. I don't have those with me, but I have always brought the bylaws with me. I've brought the bylaws with me, I've brought the manual with me, and I also have excerpts of Education Law Twenty Five Ninety. I always have that with me on person, all the time. But if you want a copy, I will re-email that to you, it's not a problem.
Yeah, I'd like to get a copy in, uh, Spanish, a hard copy, it would be very helpful.
We have now in person, um, Maria Velal.
I can put in the chat the link for the town hall.
Yes.
Um, but I wanted to mention that the interpretation, um, we're still waiting for the translated flyers for Bangla, Arabic, um, for Bangla and Arabic, we have the Spanish and English.
Correct.
So they haven't sent, sends out, I'll drop the link in the chat now.
Yes.
And if you get confirmation, um, the trustees don't have anything to do with, so we have to reach back out to whoever.
Yes, yes, and I have, I spoke to our contact in regards to that, and I have a response to that.
So the thing is, when folks register, uh, the link that I'm gonna put in, the option for the languages will be there. So I don't want the folks sitting discouraged, so that's why I wasn't gonna put it in.
We could put it for now, I would, let's just state that the flyers for the town halls will be updated with Arabic and Bangla on there, but for right now, the translations are only for Spanish, Bangla, and I think, I think that's it, yes.
If we don't speak English or Spanish?
In, no. Chinese.
It only have.
Very good. Any more comments? It is now eight forty minutes. No more comments? Back to my book, Claire, thank you, everyone, thank you, our virtual. Yeah.
Can you just say on the record that there is still one vacant seat on the council?
Yes.
We are taking after.
Thank you, yes.
We need a, a, a regular seat.
No, you have two L's.
No, one L.
You have two L parents on your council already.
Yeah, who's ever done L?
You'll decide that at your next meeting.
We, we. So you, the council doesn't get the other side. So, but what we can do is whoever is L eligible, we have to look at the local votes to sort of apply from the campaign base. And so they look at the votes, there's a way that they do the legal, the, 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 and then they look at the votes, and then I say, okay, well, you are eligible, that seat, and you're sitting on the council, and you, a regular seat. So those of you who have children that are receiving English, uh, next, uh, in the language, um, services, then we give that marijuana, and then we work through that. Correct. Probably not, all right, so we have to look at, yes, right?
Yes.
You're right.
Ellos sus niños están recibiendo servicios por ingles de segunda, ¿no? ¿No? Okay, so he's not eligible. Okay, so then you would need, there's an official help.
So both of.
Is anyone else on the council as a student, a child, that is receiving, uh, ESL, E N L services? Is he a ESL, E N L school?
Yes, acceptance of the student.
We don't have a student, or is it two?
Two, two high schools, so high school students, uh, they have to be senior, and they are appointed by the superintendent. They're interviewed by the superintendent, and they're, and they're appointed. Once that's treated, then the superintendent simply lets you know, student X, student C serves on the council. Right?
Yes.
Right, that's the thing with face, it's not like having to be in the council, that comes with the superintendent. Superintendent's appointment, like without a president appoints, right? Um, students serve while they're in the senior year, and then they leave, so they're not two years, two years. Does that make sense? Like it's after the whole trial, it's one year, and then superintendent re-works. We should be modeling the behavior of students, I would just say, on a sympathize, but I still. Modeling the behavior, and then after the president was a student, I have some students, you wait. Base members may, the public may, you don't want your children to just have a seat that they tokenize in a way that you're just filling a seat. You should be modeling what civic duty looks like, what does that shape? You know, shape and sort of like set a precedent for a student when they take on a civic duty. Right? I say that's all council members. Be very aware when you have students in the papers, they did not vote with you, they're not voting with you. Right, you can reimburse them for a car fare, and then you put the stamp paper, you get the honor. It is also get reimbursed for your white card. If they need to join the meeting virtually, or they have to do any of that, it can also, you can allocate money and budget to that. Questions? Just a little clear advice.
Yeah.
And recommend the program. Emma's like, yes, can we tell them? Yep, yep. That's all I have.
Thank you, thank you so much. Yes, Amy.
Um, I just wanna say.
Sort of care of this.
Okay, what time, cause I gotta record this. Uh, this is eight nineteen, and actually complete, actually accomplished, accomplished successfully what we needed to do for my meeting. And I would say, each and everyone here at the table, like, participated, attended, present. I do want to be officially on point that years ago earlier, when we opened the meeting, and two members of the council were excused, but with no reasoning or why they can't participate. By myself, and not to see everybody else here on the council, but with myself, I would say that I'm just keeping the six thousand here because they actually, they asked for a special meeting, and they didn't show up, and they didn't show up for no reason. And that's, to me, doesn't call unity, because we all pride our best to be on a horrible weather. And, uh, I just wanted to be on record in the minutes, for this day on social meeting, where putting three members on the council for vacancies, that they were unexcused. Because it should not have been taking the trustees from face, from the chancellor's office, the comms, and actually made this happen, and it actually happened, and thank you to Angie, Yanis Set, and Maria for actually being here and taking their oath and taking this seriously, even though they may not have what we all agree on. But I think this year, this year is gonna be a good year, because we're all on par, um, today and for this year, so thank you.
Thank you so much, that, that is a excellent comment, that. That we clarified on the record, that those two council members, Erica Gonzalez and Irina Debona, they did request it, I did print out those special requests, I received five special request meetings, and they specifically mentioned that they wanted the special meeting. Unfortunately, during the check-in, Erica Gonzalez did state that she couldn't be here, and at the eleven o'clock hour, for a quote, um, Irina Debona said she couldn't make it this evening, and with no reasoning, and this is why there's conflict, and why we butt heads, and why we do pettiness, is because someone starts this chain of events, and the domino effect. And I just thank you, Amy, Councilmember Amy, for pointing that out. And I hope that we understand the seriousness of why we are here on the council. If we all making the sacrifice to be out here, and hopefully that will be an example for when they do see that we voted on these members, that we are serious, we are not playing games this year. I'm from the B F, and I, I'm, I'm a strong advocate for the Bronx, I've been here forty-five years. I don't play games, and I, I see a game when I see it, I know it's fake when I don't see it's fake, and I don't play no games. And I'm just saying, that for the record, I digress, it is now eight twenty-two, thank you, everybody, someone. I will make some motion for the meeting to adjourn at eighty seconds, thank you so much, thank you, Jay. And, and you won't be coming back.
Good job.
Thank you so much.